Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing? Here. First item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, September 16th, 2013, and also a special meeting on that same date. Move approval? Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, we don't seem to have any. We'll move on to petitions and communications. Kane Kaiser. Would you please state your name and address? And you have five minutes to discuss whatever you would like to.
And how would I do the presentation? Did I just click on it and it opened up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
It should.
It should. And if not, we have technicians who can help you.
Okay. Well, my name is Kane Kaiser. I'm at 1711 Dobbins Drive in Champaign. I am the real estate manager, Adams Outdoor Advertising, here in Champaign, Illinois. And we've been a proud member of the Champaign-Urbana community for over 10 years, having purchased the local market from CNU Poster Advertising in 2001. Our local office employs 18 people, and we partner with over 250 local and nonprofits. And 95 percent of our local advertising that you'll see around town supports local business. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share our company's perspective this evening on digital billboards. Adams Outdoor Advertising would like to convert a minimal number of existing sign faces to digital displays. And we're here to ask that the council vote in favor of directing planning staff to begin working on the project. Now, we realize some of you will support the initiative, and some will not, but we hope that we can reach some common ground through working on the process with you. Through meetings with council members and other members of the community, I've compiled a list of six frequently asked questions that we'd like to address tonight. And I'll start this with our presentation. One of the questions we are asked is, what other municipalities, other than Champaign, allow digital displays? The answer to that is Peoria, East Peoria, Morton, Bloomington, Normal, Danville, and Decatur. What I'd like to show you right now is the current six digital displays that we have in Champaign, along with a map. And we'd encourage any of you who'd like to see them to drive by. Another important question that we're always asked is, are digital billboards safe to the motor in public? And I know most of you have seen some of the studies that we've given out, but we wanted to dig into that a little bit more in-depth in a local aspect. So, we worked with the City of Champaign Information Office at the Police Department to compile a list. Well, we have two locations on or near intersections, and we had them do a hand count of accidents at those intersections. So, I'd like to show you that slide right now. The highlighted cells are the years that the signs were installed. And as you can see, there's really no correlation between an installation of a digital display and an increase in traffic accidents. Another question we are asked, is there a mass number of digital displays that you want to install in Urbana? The answer to that is no as well. We're looking to convert another minimal amount of existing units. No more signs would be installed into the ground. And one, another slide I'd like to show you is what a conversion looks like. On the left-hand side of the screen, you're looking at a standard billboard vinyl. On the right-hand side of the screen is after it has been converted to a digital display. We are not changing the footprint of the signs, just the delivery, the delivery system. Another question we're asked, does Urbana currently allow digitals in other forms? And the answer to that is yes as well. There's a, they allow it for on-premise signage. And, you know, there's CVS, Burger King, The Pines, and Dairy Queen as well. And we have a short video we'd like to show you that shows the similarities and differences between the on-premise signage in Urbana and the digital displays that we have in Champaign. Well, one of the things that we'd like to talk about, if we can get this video going, is with digital displays, the outdoor advertising industry in general is not allowed to blink, flash, scroll, use video of any kind. It's a quick transition between each and every advertiser. Well, as this loads, I'll keep going. One of the other, another question we were asked is, do Urbana businesses use digital displays in Champaign? And there have been 17, 17 businesses, Urbana businesses do or have used digital displays. And we have, we have attached a letter from the Public Information Manager for the Urbana Park District in the packet that we provided to you, which described her campaign for the Urbana Park, Urbana Aquatic Center, which they enjoyed. So, you can take a look at that in your free time. And lastly, can the community benefit? Adams Outdoor has a memo of understanding with the FBI. We work with the local Crime Stoppers organizations. And we also are connected to the nationwide Amber Alert system, which will immediately override our systems to, to show that there's a missing child. And we will also work with the Urbana, we will also work with the City of Urbana to post timely community messages as well. Yep. So, we'll just finish up with the video that we have here. Yep. These are local on-premise signs. And as we stated earlier, we cannot swipe, fade, blink. It's a solid transition. And this digital sign you see here is our newest digital display. It's located at TGI Fridays in Champaign, near the corner of Market View and Neal Street. Well, we'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to working with you throughout the process.
Okay, thank you.
So, I wonder if, you know, it's not appropriate to discuss it now, but I wonder if we can get this on agenda for a future Committee of the Whole for a further discussion.
Yeah, we have a process underway already. So, it will appear.
And what date is that?
I don't have a date yet, but we have a process where we're explaining to the council members what the history is.
Well, I guess I'm just making a simple request to get it on the agenda of a future meeting.
And I'll second that.
It will be on the agenda, but we don't have it set up at this moment. We just heard from these gentlemen today, so.
May we express a preference for a date?
Sure, you can express a preference. What would your preference be?
I guess, I guess I would prefer to do it at a time when, you know, you all can come back. So, what would be the earliest Committee of the Whole? So, we meet next week, two weeks after that?
Yeah.
End of October?
Yeah. I think that right now, we are listening to the public. So, I think if you have a motion that you want to make about this, we can do it at the regular part of the meeting. Is that okay?
I will do so, thank you.
Okay. Reverend T.A. Burks.
Good evening. Reverend T.A. Burks, 916 Fairlong. I have two things on my card was, first one was the Regional Planning Commission. I see here that the mayor's going to appoint Charlie Smythe to the regional planning. My comments are only that, in my own personal experience, for whatever reason, I don't know why, when I go in to acquire information of their services, it seems that you receive resistance once you get to the front desk. That's number one. Number two, in my opinion, the lack of professionalism that goes on within the Regional Planning Commission. And number three, is in my opinion, once again, of the non-fair treatment of all individuals who come into the Regional Planning Commission. I don't know why that is. It's a county entity, I understand that. The only reason I'm bringing it to this particular city council is because the mayor's getting ready to appoint someone to it. And with that, since that person can hear what I'm saying, I would hope there would be some investigation into those said claims. The second point is also the human relations officer. I brought up this last week at the special meeting, that the mayor is going to commission the human relation officer to oversee the quality of life for the City of Urbana. As I stated before, I have had the inability to get the individual either on the phone or to respond to email. So, once again, I will say that I am not in support of the mayor appointing or commissioning the human relations officer to oversee the quality of life, because if one citizen cannot get a hold of him, I could imagine if a whole city was trying to get a hold of him. And those are my comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Esther Pat.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Esther Pat. I live at 706 South Kohler Avenue, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union to, once again, speak in favor of the agenda item proposing fines be, well, a new set of fines, finding system, and that the fines be imposed when violations of code are not corrected by deadlines that the city issues. As I've said to you before, this is a win-win proposition. People always come to you asking for things that cost you money. This doesn't. This will give you money. It will either, it's win-win, because it will either have the effect of getting landlords to correct violations by the deadline, which would be a far greater gain to the community than you getting a little more money in the coffers. But if it doesn't work that way, you will get more money in your coffers, which you most definitely need. And I suspect it's going to be a mixed bag, that with some landlords, it's going to work to get them to do the work on time, and with others, it's going to be harder. But at least they should be paying for the tremendous cost that the city expends in time and resources trying to get them to comply with the codes. But we've got a lot of substandard housing in this city, and it's not, it's not like it's a static thing. Places that are not substandard today could easily become substandard four months from now, as repair needs arise and landlords don't correct them. Most landlords are good about complying with codes, so I do encourage you to pass this ordinance, which I suspect you will, and to, especially to follow up and make sure that the fines are really being imposed, that the tickets are being written, not just sometimes, and not just for certain landlords, and not just if they've missed three deadlines, but as ordinance requires. On the first deadline, if they don't make it, no matter who they are, everyone gets that fine. And if they don't make that second deadline, everyone gets that fine. That's really the only way for the system to be fair, and that's the only way for it to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Billings. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Okay, Chris Billings, 405 East Main Street with Burns, Clancy &amp; Associates. And I'm really here to, I'll reserve my comments later for another item on the agenda later on, on a presentation. So, I don't need to make any comments at this time.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Is it Daimel Stoder? Did I pronounce the name correctly?
It's Daniel Stouter, and I'm here for the same reason as Mr. Billings, so I'll reserve my comments.
Okay, so you want, okay.
Yes.
We allow people to write that down, but if you're new, I can understand that. You wouldn't have known that, so that's okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And sorry to mispronounce your name, or to misread it, it looks like. Okay. Beldon Fields. Mark Leff and Artist James. Altogether?
Yes.
A trio.
A trio.
Okay.
I don't think we'll take up a full 15 minutes, but if.
Well, you get five minutes, because you're together. Did you want 15 minutes?
Then they'll come back.
Okay. Do you want 15 minutes for three people?
Yeah. This is a petition that is being presented to you by Champaign-Urbana Citizens for Peace and Justice, by the Champaign County ACLU Chapter, by the NAACP Chapter of Champaign County, by the Ministry Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Vicinity, by the League of Women Voters of Champaign County, and by Central Illinois Jobs with Justice. I, Beldon Fields, am representing CU Citizens for Peace and Justice. I think you have this in front of you. The Urbana Police Department has been reporting traffic stop data to the State of Illinois for nine years, 2004 through 2012. City data trends and patterns of traffic law enforcement can now be discerned and documented by race. A troubling and undeniable fact is that significant racial disparities reappear year after year regarding traffic law enforcement of African-American drivers. For example, although African-American drivers composed 14 to 16 percent of the driving public, they composed approximately 30, 38 percent of the stops conducted by the Urbana Police Department each of the nine years. No other racial driving group in the City of Urbana comes close to this level of disparity. Rather, their percent of all stops is consistently at or below the percentage of the driving public. Without going into great detail here, disparity, disparities involving African-American drivers repeatedly exist year after year in citation rates, number of consent searches, and number of dog sniff searches. Aside from the pure injustice of racial disparities, the negative impact of these disparities translates into an inequitable loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars in citations, hundreds of hours of disrupted personal time, and strained police-community relations. Solving this problem will take more effort than the city has shown to date. Addressing it internally has resulted in little improvement. The city must allow for more direct community involvement and participation to help find the appropriate responses and actions needed to resolve this problem.
I'm Artist James with the NAACP. To continue this special request letter, Alexander Wies, PhD, Project Director of IDOT Data Collection, stated in the initial 2004 report. The system will provide a method for serious community-based introspection and be a useful instrument to help frame this important discussion, and can provide a framework for accountability and community participation. In his July 19 Trayvon Martin speech to the nation, President Obama included the following comment. When I was in Illinois, I passed a racial profiling legislation, and this actually did just two simple things. One, it collected data on traffic stop and the race of the person who was stopped. But the other thing was it resourced us training police department across the state on how to think about potential racial bias and ways to further professionalize what they were doing. As concerned citizens and active local community organizations, we are asking you, our elected city representatives, for more opportunities for direct community participation and a new way forward in police-community relations. The new approach will enable the community to have a dialogue about potential racial bias and develop together ways to further strengthen the Urbana Police Department. The public expects our police department to enforce traffic laws.
You have one minute left, gentlemen.
Partially, fairly, and equitably, regardless of the driver's race.
Okay, I'm Mark Leff, representing the Champaign County ACLU Chapter in support of this request under 604 West Washington Street. So, we're making two requests of the mayor and city council. First, to schedule a special study session of the city council between October 29th and November 15th to present, discuss, and review the IDOT traffic data. This would allow adequate time for staff, the city council, and the public to be notified and to prepare information, comments, and questions for the study session. Second, to create, support, and fund an ad hoc traffic stop data committee. This committee would meet to study the data, policies, and policing procedures involving traffic stops in more detail. They would be charged to research and prepare a set of recommendations to address the racial disparities found in Urbana's traffic stop data. The committee should consist of at least 30 percent African-American representation, and could be composed of members from each of the signatory organizations, general community members appointed by the mayor, two representatives from the Urbana Police Department, city support staff, and council representation, if desired. We encourage the City of Urbana to take a proactive approach of engaging the community in helping to address this problem. We thank you for your time, consideration, and service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a request to read a proclamation now, because we have a student, a child waiting for this. So, I would like to read this. This is about International Walk and Roll to School Day. Whereas hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, and a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion, air pollution, and an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trip to school each day. And whereas community leaders and parents can determine the walkability of their community by using a walkability checklist, and whereas community members and leaders can plan to make immediate changes to enable children to safely walk and bicycle in our communities, and whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities, now therefore, I, Laurel Lunt Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim October 9th, 2013, as International Walk and Roll to School Day, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day. Okay?[1523.22][1523.22][applause]
Thank you for letting us come up early. Myra and her mom very graciously agreed to come tonight and accept the proclamation, and I want to say how much we appreciate the support of the City of Urbana, and especially the council members who are joining us on Wednesday. And we look forward to seeing you there. Carol Ammons is going to walk with King, and Charlie is going to participate at Lille. If anybody else still wants to join us, send us an email. We'll be delighted to have you. You're going to come? Oh, good.[1591.12][1591.12][laughing] Because it means a lot to the children when our city officials come and participate with them. They feel that their safety is a higher priority, and it's very important to them when the officials come and, and take time out of their day to come walk. And several of the schools have a parent breakfast afterwards, so you have an opportunity to talk with them about safety concerns that they have. So, thanks again. The city has been very supportive of our efforts, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Cynthia, for all you do on this issue in helping our kids be able to walk to school.
And thanks.
Thank you, Myra.
Myra's mom.
Okay, Patricia Avery.
Good evening. Patricia Avery, 1308 West Clark in Champaign. I just want to come and congratulate the city on 180 years. I'm sorry I was unable to attend the celebration on Saturday, but it looks like it was a wonderful event. Thank you for the cake tonight. Unfortunately, I won't be having any. I'm having a little trouble right now with my pants. But I would say going forward, I wish you well in your next 180 years. But I would like to see, we're coming from a rich, diverse, and cultural community. I would like to see more diversity within the city government. Let it reflect your rich city diversity. I'd like to see that kind of diversity also in not just employment, but on your public, not public works, but any development you might be doing in Urbana. I would like to see more of a diverse in terms of the businesses that we have in Urbana. So, any, any way that you can encourage or support economic development or new businesses in terms of the diversity, I would encourage that, because Urbana is 180 years going forward. It should reflect the community. I also want to take an opportunity, since I'm congratulating you all on your anniversaries, to congratulate Councilman Eric Jacobson on his 50th golden anniversary. He and Naomi, congratulations on that. Thank you very much.
Well, Patricia, I'm sorry you couldn't make our birthday celebration, but we did have a limerick contest, and I'd like to read the winning limerick. "From slavery, Abe Lincoln did free us. He'd be proud if today he could see us. Urbana fights the good fights to protect human rights, all from the wheel of a Prius." That was, that was, the grand winner was Diane Marlin from the Urbana City Council. And also, we, I just got back from a ceremony for Habitat for... And also, we, I just got back from a ceremony for Habitat for Humanity. They are building four new homes, and they are all in Urbana. Our Community Development Department does a great job finding properties. We clear what was there before and give the land to Habitat for Humanity or one of our other organizations that provides low-income housing. The last person I have to speak is Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, but they, I don't think, want to speak. They just want to register that they are concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewers. So, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council? Dennis?
Probably this would be a good time to just remind all the members of the council that we are formulating our city council goals for the coming years. We have a committee here in, on the city council who are working on creating a survey to do some exploration in the community about possible goals and goal setting. And also, if there's an item on the revised draft that you received today via email that you could add points of exploration or objectives to reach under the various goals, please send them to either myself or Charlie Smythe.
Okay, thank you. The next item is unfinished business. I don't think we have anything to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees, the Committee of the Whole. That was Carol Ammons.
Committee of the Whole moves ordinance number 2013-09-082, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 5, Article 11, what is it?
Nine.
Nine, Section 5-83 regarding property maintenance code violations. We so move.
Second. Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Diane?
I support this ordinance. I would like to offer an amendment to it. In the discussion we had back on, I guess it was September 9th on this, one of the, the third part of what we sent to staff to write up was a regular reporting to council. So, I would propose that Section 2 of this ordinance read as follows. Quote, "The quote, 'The code official or designee shall provide to city council a bi-monthly written report documenting, quote, 'failure to comply tickets beginning in January 2014.' The report shall include property address, PIN, owner name, fine amounts, date issued, date due, amount paid, date paid, late balance due, violation status, and any other pertinent information, and the report shall be included in the council packet."
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Jacobson. Does the, did you want to say something, Eric?
I wanted to ask, I want to be sure, does bi-monthly mean every other month? Okay, not twice a month.
I hope so.
Okay, okay.
Okay, is there response? Do you, did you have that list already from the C.D. Department? Is that something?
Well, we noted in the memo that we would do that anyway. Libby and I talked about whether it was important to put it in the ordinance or not. We weren't sure that that was the procedure.
Okay, so that's an amendment to put in the ordinance, but you're prepared to go ahead with it anyway?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, well, okay, Dennis?
Yeah, it probably makes sense, at least for the first year, to get pretty good records and responses about how this process is going and what the interactions are with the different property owners. If you're going to give this to us, I guess it would become public property, public information. And is that appropriate? Is that, we don't have a problem with that, do we? And Libby, Libby's kind of indicating not really, so, okay. So, it's good. I think, I think for the first year, we ought to have some good accounting and find out how, track what the viability of the new program is to find out what its success is. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate the amendment.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment. Would the clerk please call the roll?
On the amendment, all you need is a voice vote on that.
Okay. Sorry about that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Well, that carries. All right, the ordinance as amended, would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Carol?
Committee moves ordinance number 2013-09-089, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses for A-plus restaurant and entertainment, LLC, DBA, A-plus VIP lounge, 214 West Main Street.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
Your...
I need to recuse myself as a liquor license holder. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the second was...
I was going to make the second.
Okay.
It's in my ward, and I appreciate it very much that we're having this new experience on Main Street.
Okay. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Carol?
Committee recommends resolution number 2013-09-050R, resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, Filer World and Florida Avenue. We move for a committee. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Committee moves ordinance number 2013-09-088, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, city building, emergency air condition, and unit replacement. We so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries.
Finally, Committee of the Whole moves ordinance number 2013-09-090, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, as Prairie Winds Drive and Prairie Winds Circle. We so move.
Second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Madigan. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries. That's all from committee. Okay, thank you, Carol. Reports of special committees? Okay, reports of officers? No reports of officers? Oh, oh, we do have one. Tom Carino, Economic Development.
Yes, included in the packet was this month's economic development report. Just to highlight a few items, Satari Indian Restaurant opened on September 3rd at 114 South Ray Street. That's at the former Black Rock Pizza and former Embassy and former Red Star Liquors. They're doing very well at that location. The new Black Rock Pizza, formerly at that location, is now open at the 88 Broadway space in Lincoln Square Village. They had a ribbon cutting on September 19th. Flying Machine Coffee and Pizza M have both held soft openings and are gearing up for full openings. There is a ribbon cutting for multiple businesses at 206 West Main Street, which is CoLab, and so on Friday, October 11th, there will be ribbon cuttings for Urbana Land Arts, Norden, Cathedral Consulting, and Hands-on, so that will be an active ribbon cutting event. There was also a ribbon...
What time is that, Tom?
I'm sorry, that is at, it's actually 2:00, I believe. The first series is at 3:30, and then there is a second series at 5:30, but I'll confirm those and get those to you. There was also a ribbon cutting on Monday, September 23rd, for Buffant Salon, which is at the pines at Stone Creek Commons. Advantage Recycling held a ribbon cutting and grand opening on September 21st on North Cunningham Avenue. Armored Gopher Games, also on Cunningham Avenue at North Gate Shopping Center, held a ribbon cutting on September 14th, and that's at 1508 North Cunningham Avenue. And then finally, ribbon cutting was held for the Adams-Lenore Fair Lawn Multi-Use Path, and that celebration took place also on September 14th. So, lots of activity. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Tom? Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Bill Gray, Director of Public Works.
I wanted to give council a heads up and the public that we're going to have a North Lincoln Avenue public meeting on Tuesday, October 29th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Civic Center. This is Lincoln Avenue project from Sailing Court up to the proposed Olympian Drive project. So, we'll invite the public and anyone interested to see the plans for that project. Secondly, tonight, this week at night, there will be a lot of paving going on downtown on Main Street, on Ray Street, on Elm Street, on Broadway. Although there are different contracts, the stars are aligned that they're all doing the work the same week. So, if you're going to be going to a restaurant or any activity downtown, just watch out for those activities that are going on. And lastly, just an update, a project is beginning to wind down. There's mostly restoration and a few other odds and ends to do, but north part of town, I urge you to check out the new Matthews Street between Ellis and Church, and then Church Street west of Goodwin. And we did a half a block of Church Street east of Goodwin, and then a large patch on Bezlin just west of Matthews. So, this has been a major transformation in that area. It looks great, and we get the grass growing and cleaned up will be even better. So, wanted to let you know updates on that project, and our east Main Street project is going gangbusters. This is lots of new sidewalk, ramps, ultimately bike lanes and paving. Again, we're hoping to get that done before Thanksgiving, but that, that project's moving along post haste also, so lots of roadwork going on in town.
Just one question, Ms. Gray. Carol?
Is there an end in sight to Ray Street and the Boneyard Bridge?
Yes, there is an end in sight. Even though we're going to be paving Ray Street south of Griggs, we're going to have Ray Street open, open at both ends between Griggs and University, but it's going to be closed at the intersection of Race and Griggs to reconstruct that intersection. So, there was a press release sent out. I'm sorry, it's a little bit confusing, but we, today we did open up the north end at University Avenue, so you can get to Silver Creek or other businesses from the north and the south end. But next week, we'll be closing the intersection right by the school admin building at Griggs and doing that full-depth concrete patching work there. So, once that's done, the end is in sight for Ray Street being open. Last week was out at the Boneyard Project. It's moving along great. If you haven't seen it, the new walls, the bridges, it's really starting to take shape. We're still having little delays with some utilities in town, but other than that, things are going pretty well, so. But yes, the Ray Street to be fully open is great, and that's one block north of University Avenue is done between Park and, and University Avenue and Race. That's been reconstructed, and we preserve some of the brick sidewalk there and new street, so it's, it's coming together nicely. But the paving of Broadway will be this week, and that will take care of that, and there'll be work in and around both railroad crossings to be done at a future time by the railroad company.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other reports of officers? Okay, I'd like to do, under new business, I have some appointments. First, to Public Arts Commission, Ilona Matkowski, and to the Human Relations Commission, Tyler Morrison. Carol?
I'd like to move omnibus on both appointments.
Okay, well, we can do both of them. Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Jacobson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes, thank you. And then we have an intergovernmental appointment. Carol Ammons was appointed to the Regional Planning Commission, but she's also been appointed to the UCTB, so she asked that someone else be appointed, so Charlie is willing to serve on that. So, I'd like to point Charlie Smythe to be one of the city's representatives to the urban, to the Regional Planning Commission. I'm the other representative. Okay, motion by Diane Marlin, seconded by Carol Ammons. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Charlie didn't say he was opposed, so he's, he's gotten to be appointed. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Yes, a question?
From our public participation this evening, I'd like to request that the Adams Outdoor signs be put on study session October 28th, Committee of the Whole, and that the traffic committee study session from the presentation be November 11th, Committee of the Whole.
I'll second.
Okay, you want one to be on the 28th and one to be on the 11th?
Yes.
So, these will, you want a study session?
Yes, those are both.
Of the same date as the Committee of the Whole?
That's correct.
So, you want it to be earlier than the Committee of the Whole?
Like, it can be an agenda item. It doesn't have to be an hour earlier.
Agenda item on the Committee.
No, they can be an agenda item.
All right, okay. So, it's not really a study session, it's just regular committee?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that. On the ordinances here, I would like to move the one that is put at number four first and then do number three after that. So, this would be ordinance number 2013-10-092, an ordinance approving the special use permit to allow expansion of the accessory parking lot in the R5 Medium Density Residential District. And this is 709 West Clark, well, 701, 703, 705, 707, and 709 West Clark Street. And we have Daniel Stoudt, well, we'll do the staff presentation first, and then we'll ask Mr. Stoudt and Mr. Billings to come up. Okay?
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
So, this is a request for a special use permit to install a parking lot on a, or a portion of, a portion of a parking lot on these six properties, and additionally on Sass Frass Alley. That alley case will be coming up where the church requests that to be vacated. The impetus for this is St. Patrick's Church is, they're doing an expansion of their main sanctuary. They will be here, as they stated, to provide details on that, so I'll just give a quick overview of the analysis. The expansion will increase the amount of seating within the church from 300 to about 600 people. There will also be a new lobby, a new outdoor plaza, more meeting spaces, other things the church will probably discuss. So, the expansion by itself is allowed by right for a church use in the R4 zoning district. Along with the expansion, the church is requesting to increase their, the size of their parking lots. So, after the proposed expansion, the required numbers of parking spaces for the church will be increased to 120. The church is requesting to install 188 spaces. So, this is a special use permit request to allow the additional parking that's not required, that is, the 68 extra spaces. And it's a special use because this location is within 600 feet of properties zoned R1, R2, or R3. So, a little bit more on the expansion. You can see the properties going from right to left here. There's a parking lot existing. There's a 1, 2, 3 apartment buildings, which will be torn down. There's a, a single-family home, which has been in use as storage for the church for some time. And then there's a fourth apartment building on the far property here. So, all these structures will be demolished to make way for the new parking lots. Looking at the area in general, it's a residential area. There, the church is down here on Main Street, the parish center is at Main and Kohler. There's single-family homes, there's apartment buildings, and there are duplexes across Main Street, across Kohler, across Bucy. To the north, there's a parking lot for Carl Hospital and a storage garage there. Actually, let me pull up some photos. See. So this is walking around from the east side of Sassafras Alley, walking around to the north. So directly east from the alley is a home. North of that, there's a home. Then we get into Carl Hospital parking lots. And all the way across the north on Clark Street, there's more Carl Hospital parking lots, and there's their storage garage. Then swinging around to the left, there's a vacant lot on the northwest corner of Bucy and Clark. And then across the, to the west from the subject site, there's an apartment building. And then this is the final view from the Sassafras Alley facing west. You can see the backyard of a home. So that's the surrounding land uses and surrounding zoning districts. The subject property is zoned R5 Medium High Density Multifamily in the brown. The church itself is zoned R4 Medium Density Multifamily Residential in the light brown. You can see Carl Hospital parking to the north is zoned B3, so there won't be major impacts there. To the east, there's some properties zoned R4, I'm sorry, R5. And then R2, there's some single-family homes to the east here. To the west also, there's R4 apartment building and R2 single-family homes. So those are, those will be viewing the proposed parking lot. Taking a quick look at our comprehensive plan, the future land use designated for the site is institutional to match the church and the hospital in this area. So the ma, the future land use does match the proposed parking lot. So now I'd like to pull up the actual site plan and just do a quick review. Staff has done a complete zoning review. Basically, the site plan matches all requirements for zoning. You can see around the edge, there is, there are bushes proposed to be added for screening, which is required between parking lots and residential uses. The applicant is proposing to use, save as many street trees as possible, which is a favorable outcome. Looking at access, the applicant is proposing to close the alleyway access to the east and to shift that slightly north, and that will need to be widened in order to meet zoning ordinance standards. Two-way drives must be about 20 feet wide, so they're met, they're exceeding that standard. On the northeast corner, there will be some storage sheds for church use. Looking within the parking lot itself, they are proposing to add all the required street trees, I'm sorry, shade trees. It's one tree per every nine spaces. So there will be 21 trees. To the south, here you can see the proposed church expansion, where they're going to connect the existing church to the parish center on the plaza here. Just north of that, they're adding required bicycle parking. They'll have 12, spaces for 12 bicycles, which meets the requirements. They'll have the required accessible parking close to the door, as required. Also, they'll have a new refuse area for a dumpster recycling. And they're proposing to add it in this location. It'll be screened, it'll be outside of the required yard. But they are moving it to this location because of the wear and tear that garbage trucks place on the pavement. So they'll have reinforced concrete where the garbage trucks access this here. At Plan Commission, on November 19th, we had a public hearing, and the resident directly across the street to the east, she, she had some concerns about the placement of the dumpster here. So the applicant did agree to incorporate some additional screening, vegetative screening, in addition to the required fence screening in front of the dumpster here. Looking at the criteria for a special use permit, basically, they're all met. The first criteria, the proposed use is conducive to the public conveni, convenience at this location. The church has been here for over 100 years, and the proposed parking lot will allow them to continue to be in this location. It'll be a good neighbor. Their expanded parking lot will free up parking spaces on the streets, which will be a good thing on church days. The second criteria, that the proposed use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated, so it will not be unreasonably injurious to the district, and it will not. They are adding screening and such. So, and they'll, there will actually be fewer services, so fewer times of impact to the neighborhood with the new church space and expanded parking lot. And the last criteria, that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations of the district, it does so. As I mentioned, Plan Commission held this case on September 19th, and they voted five to zero to, for the case to City Council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the two conditions listed here. And staff has recommended a third condition in order to address the concerns of the neighbor with the, regarding the dumpster. So Plan Commission has recommended approval, and staff concurs with that recommendation. The petitioner is here to answer questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff.
You have any questions for Jeff Engstrom?
I do.
Charlie, Charlie has.
Oh, Charlie. Where did that voice come from?
Yeah, sorry.
Charlie, yes, you have a question.
Yeah, Jeff, could you show me real quickly where, where the other fences are on that parking lot?
The fences?
Yeah, or is it just the, just the dumpster area?
Yes, the dumpster is the only area that will have a fence. There will be hedges along the street, along the sidewalks. You can see.
Okay, and then my other question, you said something that the, and I didn't catch this in the notes, that the parking lot was going to be 180 spaces versus the required 120?
It'd be 188 spaces, yes.
Okay, is there a reason for it to be so much bigger than required?
Basically, it's a popular church, and they have a lot of people coming to their services. They have weddings and such, so they need the extra space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Bill Brown.
Yeah, a question about the parking. If they, if they rent that out to Carl, do we get to tax that?
The petitioner can speak more to that. From what I understand, they have an agreement with, or an understanding with Carl where they, where each of the groups uses the unused parking at opposite times. So during the weekdays, Carl staff might use the church parking lot, and during the weekends, the church may use the adjacent Carl parking. So if there is, if there's no rent being made, then we cannot assess them. But there are other churches in town which do lease out spaces to Carl, and the township assessor has indicated that those are assessed at about $100 per parking space, but those do generate income.
There are a number of apartment buildings that are going to be torn down. Could you say what the effect on the tax base would be? And the dollars to the different governments?
Yep. Sorry, we didn't get this in the packet. We're handing out a table on the bottom of this page that has the assessed values and the market values for each of these properties. 701 Clark is a parking lot currently used by the church, so there's no assessment. 709, also a church use for storage, so there's no assessment. But for the four apartment buildings, the current market value is approximately $824,963. The assessed value is $274,960. And so from the city, from that amount, the city generates $4,706 annually.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Carol.
Are these apartment buildings currently rented?
No, actually, the church has allowed those leases to lapse in anticipation of the project, so they've, all the leases ended in August and September.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Daniel Stoudt and Chris Billing, would you like to come up?
Just do one at a time here. Thank you. I'm Chris Billing, Vice President, Burns, Clancy &amp; Associates here in Urbana. I'm working on the, the site and civil type aspects of the project, and I'll let Daniel go ahead and introduce himself again as the architect.
I'm Daniel Stoudt with Stoudt Architecture out of St. Louis, Missouri, and we're the architect for the project. More for the church expansion, so Chris gets to talk more. But if you have any questions regarding what is going to go on with the church, I can address those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. I think Jeff did a fairly good job of really giving the overview of what's going on. And I'm here really specifically to address the parking lot and the parking expansion briefly. Over, over a period of time, the church has assessed its, its needs and the population, and more importantly, the needs it has going over. And the last time was about on the order of five years ago or so, when, again, the needs were assessed of what the church really needed to do. They began a capital campaign in order to begin raising funds. And we're at the point, some, you'll see the exhibit that's up there, it's not a part of your packet or exhibit, but there were some schematic designs prepared at that time, about five years ago, of which, to judge the, meeting the needs of what has transpired over time. It's not just that the church needs to be bigger, but basically, the changes in the liturgy and the way that the liturgy is celebrated really makes the existing church not, not really meeting the needs of what we, what we really need today. So that's what's driving the expansion or the, of the church to meet our present needs. It will increase the capacity, and we're anticipating, you know, other, other needs in the next coming decades. The original church structure was built over 100 years ago by some forward-thinking families, and has served us well, and it's just in need of, of modernizing to meet today's needs. The goals overall in, in, I believe we'll be undertaking or starting soon really the design elements and design tasks for the church expansion and the building in all itself. What, what the parish hopes to do is, because some of the, a good part of the existing parking lot that's there on site will really be needed for the construction of the church building, this, the addition. So the idea is to, at this point in time, before that would start next year, is to go in, clear the north half of the block, north of the alley, take those structures down, and build the expanded parking essentially north of the alley. Use, then consume, the existing parking lot for the staging and construction of the new facility. Come back in and then, then make our retrofits and improvements to the southern part of the parking lot from the alley on south. But that way, it would expand parking, but more importantly, that parking would be there now for the construction phase, so we still have a place to park. There's, it, there's really quite a bit of impact on the neighborhood, on-street parking and all, and so this will provide a whole lot more parking spaces on-site and less an impacts on the neighborhood of the on-street parking.
Are you planning, or looking at permeable pavement by any chance?
We're not looking at permeable pavement. There will be underground stormwater detention that we will put in, and that will, that will actually do some groundwater recharge using that type of system. The, the problem with permeable paving on an area that's got buildings demoed and then backfilled and all, that, that subsoil, that soil is not going to be conducive to putting the permeable paving on it. And permeable paving also requires specialized maintenance and all, which I think the parish really won't be able to address sufficiently.
Any other questions? Eric.
So just a comment, of course, we live catty-corner to the church. And church has been a good neighbor, as I understand it, it was before my time, since it was built. The reason there's not a bell in the steeple is because the family who built the house that we now live in gave a significant gift to the church for its construction on the condition that there not be a bell, because they wanted to sleep in on Sunday mornings. So, so you do have a long tradition of being a good neighbor. I concur, and I think my neighbors, our neighbors concur, that it's a good idea to increase the on-site parking, because when, when church is there, there can be substantial congestion. We actually, the city a long time ago, provided for parking on both sides of Main Street along there, which they had not done before in response to, you know, this, this need for on-street parking. And that was necessary, but it actually has made the street significantly more congested than we would like it to be. So the, it's, it's regrettable that the apartment buildings are going to be removed, but they, they were not, they are not, have not been very distinguished. You know, they're not in any way architecturally distinguished, and primarily, people have lived there relatively transiently anyway. We will lose some revenue, but I think the, and I think overall, the, the site will look better. I think it is a plus to close Sassafras Alley. I, I don't know how many accidents there were of people coming out of Sassafras Alley, but I know one that, that was very memorable because my granddaughter was driving north on Bucy, and a car came out of Sassafras Alley and just ran right into her. Apparently, didn't realize it was necessary to stop and looked out Bucy for oncoming traffic. So, so that's, that's good. And, and, and I think that, I think it's going to look good. So I, you know, I, I support it, and I think that, and I'm... So I, you know, I support it, and I think that, and I'm confident that our neighbors support it.
Thank you.
Dennis?
I know that we're not really looking at the ultimate plans the church has at this time. I guess I'd just like to ask, while we're here talking about your project, the church itself has got significant architectural interest. It's pretty historic, it's over 100 years old, you've had your centennial a while ago. I guess my concern would be that any addition that you're going to place onto the side of the church, it's going to change the Greyhound-like streamlined quality of that building, and, you know, are you going to come back sometime in the future to show us, you know, your plans as far as, you know, diagrams or drafts of architectural drafts about how this new facade might look after the changes?
I believe we weren't required, is that correct, because it is a permitted use?
Right, you don't have to.
Not that I'm opposed, but I can show you now if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm curious, you know, it's going to affect the neighborhood and impact it somewhat, so.
These are some renderings of what it's going to look like. You see, the one on the top is on Main Street. You can see that on the left side of that rendering is the main church that exists now, and everything to the right of that, Chris is going to help me out here. Right, that's the existing, and that's the addition. We're going to great lengths to match the brick detailing, the pitch of the roof, the arched windows, to make it look, you know, as near as identical to the original church as possible. The idea was not to, you know, slam a modern addition up next to that historic church, but to continue on. You know, a trained eye will be able to tell that that church was added to, but, you know, the Gothic cathedrals in France were added to over centuries and still look like they belong together, so. The next rendering down below is on the north side, looking back, sort of standing in what would be Sassafras Alley, or the new parking lot that we're discussing right now, looking back to the south. And again, you can see the existing church is on the far right, and, probably loud enough, I don't need that. This portion from here on would be the new nave of the church, and this portion from here on would be the new gathering area, restrooms, little lounge area.
Daniel, could you tilt that slightly in a, forward, because there's a sheen on it? Okay, it was catching a glare that totally blocked out the image. I see, all right.
So, and a new plaza that will kind of make for a main entrance of the facility. You know, the main entrance is designed on Main Street like many churches were, nobody parks in front of that, haven't for half a century at least. So this will make more of the main entrance, and then also connect to the existing entrance to the parish center over there. And even on the inside, we're trying to recreate some of the details, the archways, the vaulting, the wood trusses and whatnot, so to make it look like it belongs with the architecture that's already there.
Well, it's a handsome church. I attend once a year, Christmas Eve, and, you know, it would be great to see it not, not, you know, I'm glad you're not going to put on some kind of like modern square, you know, made out of black crystal on the side of it, so.
Yeah, so there was a representative from the church who came by and gave us a pamphlet, which did show the, you know, the architect's rendering of the outside, and it appeared to us, to Naomi and me, that it's very much in keeping with the existing architecture.
Diane?
Well, I'll go ahead and move approval of ordinance number 2013-10-092 with the conditions recommended by the plan commission and city staff.
Okay, motion by Marlin, second by Ammons. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have ordinance number 2013-10-091, an ordinance vacating an alley, Sassafras Alley between Bucie and Kohler Avenues.
No, we did the, we moved four up ahead. We did the special use permit, and now we're doing the alley. We have to vacate an alley.
I move that we accept recommenda-
Okay, we have Bill Gray to talk about it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we didn't.
Well, this is a follow-up then to the action you just took, and that is, is that part and parcel to the parking lot working in their site plan is, this public alley would need to be vacated, which is our policy. We would have an appraiser reprise it. That was done. There's a value set at $33,000. I've discussed this value with the church. The church has accepted the appraised value. What's before you is an ordinance that would vacate the alley in contention on payment to the city, and then we would record this vacated ordinance, assuming city council would approve it. So we've had other examples of alley vacations elsewhere in the city in the past, and we're just following that practice. And the church is the property owner of record on both the north and south side of the alley in this block.
Dennis?
I've got a question, I guess. And it's, maybe it's historic. This is a unique town, in my estimation, it names its alleys. We have Crane Alley, we have Fish Alley, we have Cherry Alley, and we have the beautiful name of Sassafras Alley. If this alley disappears, does that mean that we have no other remnant of this alley in our community?
There's more Sassafras alleys east and west of here.
Well, I would just make a comment, that it would be great if the church commemorated the name Sassafras Alley somehow on a plaque or a sign.
Or you could serve Sassafras tea, perhaps. Plant a Sassafras tree, there's all kinds of possibilities.
So now you've got like four creative thoughts to think about. But in your spirit of generosity, I'm sure you'll probably come up with something.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a-
Yeah, I'll make a motion then.
Okay, motion by Dennis Roberts?
To accept this and vacate this beautiful alley, but remember the name.
I'll second the motion to vacate this rather ugly alley, but with a beautiful name.
Okay, any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, now we're up to ordinance number 2013-10-093, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, Section 14.7 regarding the schedule of fees, the annual rental registration, property registration for fiscal year 2013-2014. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Oh, here's Libby to discuss it.
This does bear a resemblance to an ordinance that we brought before, brought to the council last month. Realized there was some sticker shock there, so we're proposing somewhat less extensive increase for the multifamily units for our annual rental registration to go to $16 from 12 rather than 20. And so, trying again to expand the program to keep up with its demands, this would generate an estimate of about $48,500. In addition, we would hope to see some increased fines and the reinspection fines that are included in the ordinance, and would work initially with the rest of the fiscal year for a new staff member to assist in inspections, and then at budget time, we would do some belt tightening or other adjustments as necessary to make sure that we could carry forward the position. And as before, we would be offering a waiver for the Class A properties moving forward. Any questions?
Bill?
Yeah, I had several questions earlier this week. Thanks for being patient with me and answering those. There was one I wanted to follow up on. In the Building Safety Division Housing Activity Report, there was this number for open working cases, systematic inspections, 1,534. I'm just having a hard time wrapping my brain around what an open working case is. Does that mean that 1,534 violations are out there that haven't been corrected?
As I understand it, this was a point in time of December 31st, 2012, and, do you have a better explanation?
What place that number was, was the ongoing, the ones that are under, the inspections are underway, scheduled, and the inspections have been completed and not yet closed, not the process of obviously getting closed.
So I think that was a point in time number. I don't know how specifically meaningful it is, because we have the completed cases that we documented in the last two memos.
I think the total per year was, I don't, it seemed like it was around 500, so it just, it's hard to conceive exactly what that is. But I also noticed that there have been 1,006 properties inspected, and we have 1,800 houses and apartments, houses and duplexes alone. So there's at least 800 houses and duplexes that haven't been inspected since the beginning of this program six years ago, it sounds like, and that you're not in your head, so.
And we had not inspected those prior to the program. So, again, looking at the city, that is the inventory that we haven't been able to touch comprises that number.
So it sounds like, I don't think, the way, the status quo isn't really meeting the goals of what the ordinance set out to do. It's not really inspecting things within any reasonable cycle, any six-year cycle. We still have 800 to go. I understand most of the apartments have been completed. So it's, something's going to have to change, I think. Either we're going to have to just cut back to doing life safety only inspections like normal does with the current staff in order to get through them every year or two, or else we're going to have to add extra help. And I think the scaled back version, where it would create 48,000 or a little less, is probably a decent compromise compared to the 70 or 60, whatever the original ask was. And I would hope that we wouldn't need to hire, you know, an $80,000 manager to take care of this. I think if you had a team of three people and a team leader, it seemed like that could function pretty efficiently with good oversight, and maybe the finding would help. The only other thing I really wanted to mention was, what was it? There was something else, maybe I'll think of it. Anybody else want to talk?
Eric?
So, it doesn't say anything in the ordinance about exempting of the Class A landlords, does it? So where, at what fraction of landlords are Class A, or have I missed it in the reading? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, and what fraction of our landlords are Class A landlords?
I believe we have, in the current inventory that have been classed, we have 75 with As.
Eighty, okay.
Eighty-one, and all but two are either single-family or duplex. We have two apartment complexes that earned a Class A. So for the proportion-
Yeah, what, so, and what exactly constitutes a Class A? No code violations, okay, so, so even if, so Class A folks are code violations, but they, there are no code violations, so if you have a code violation, but you fix it right away, you're still not Class A?
You'd be B. B is very good, and I do know that one of the complexes that earned the A, they prepared ahead of time, and they just went through, made all the fixes, all the corrections, and that's how they earned the A.
Okay. I have very mixed feelings about this, which I'm sure came through in the previous discussion. And the mixed feelings are as follows, that I, in principle, I really hate the idea of ramping up the fees on good landlords for things that are, you know, for problems that are necessitated, or issues that are necessitated by the bad landlords. And this is somewhat better than the previous ordinance that we saw. I really, now, I guess I was told that we had a legal opinion that we could not have a different schedule of fees for bad landlords and good landlords. However, the, I, there are many cities around the nation that have a rental registration fee and have discounts for good landlords. And so I think that, I don't understand, I don't understand the legal argument. Even if the legal argument is true and would open us to legal action, the only people who would sue us would be the people who are, would be the bad landlords. And heck, let's just raise the fine schedule, but, to compensate for that. But now, Jim is frowning at me, so he's, which makes me think that he has, that I've said something that he might disagree with.
Well, yeah, I, maybe I misinterpreted what Jim told me a few weeks ago, but would you like to comment on that?
I, I don't think you can have a, unless there is a strong rational basis, a multi-tier initial or renewal registration fee. I think, one, it would be difficult to administer, especially because of the time lapse between one inspection or another, scheduled inspection by zone. So I think there would be a problem there. The concern that I had was focusing on recalcitrant landlords or building owners and deciding to charge them a higher fee. In terms of fines, there is a cap that's imposed by the state that provides that no fine can be more than $750. Now, you can start the ramp up to reach $750, as I believe the proposal, the next proposal does. So instead of starting at $100 per violation, for example, you could start at 400 or 500 or whatever, and then you can get into daily fines for persistent violations, you know, $750 a day. But I think you would get into a, you know, because of, unless you're going to inspect every building every year, you know, on a regular scheduled inspection, I believe there would be a problem, regardless of what the other cities do. It doesn't mean they're right, just means they do it.
Well, so, I guess what I would like to ask is that within the year, I understand we have to do something right away for this coming year, because we have a deadline. But I would really like to ask for sometime in maybe about nine months, I'd really like to ask for a report on the feasibility of doing more graduation. Because we are doing some graduation, we're waiving the fee. We're waiving the fee for our very best landlords. So as a point of principle, we can do that. So the question I have is, I would really like to know the feasibility of, the feasibility of putting as much of the onus as possible, as much of the pain as- of putting as much of the onus as possible, as much of the pain as possible, on people who are violating our ordinances. And as far, and I think that we haven't really done an adequate job of exploring that.
I think one way you can do that, if that is the council policy and goal, is to charge for subsequent inspections. I'm not talking about the regularly scheduled zoning, zone inspections. I'm talking about a complaint or a condition that arises where an inspector goes out. If they have to subsequently make multiple inspections, not only can you fine for non-compliance, but I believe you can charge a fee for that additional inspection. And I don't know what the value per hour of the time is, but it, but it doesn't have to necessarily be based on the inspector's time.
Well, please.
Okay, Libby wants to comment on that.
Just a good point. And I did want to also point out that in this proposal for the fees, we have added a new reinspection fee for exactly what you're talking about, where they failed to correct or missed the deadline. The earlier action tonight by council would make the penalty much, much higher for that, depending again on the severity of the violation. So I think that we realize there's the range of the landlords. So on the plus side, there would be the, at least moving forward, the waiver, the one-year waiver. We can assess how that is, what that cost us, the effects, and come back and talk more about that. On the negative side, there's much higher fines now in place if there is an uncorrected violation. And then in addition, added fees for the reinspection. So I think we're beginning to see a rebalancing of the budget for the program. Maybe some baby steps, but we can evaluate.
Okay, well, please, I will.
Would you like to make a motion after this, this vote?
Sure. Yes, I'd like to do that.
If your question is you want legal to do research on it, as far as I'm concerned, you don't need a motion requesting legal to do the research. We'll do it.
Okay, yeah, I'd like legal and, and, yeah, I'd like, from both legal and community services, I would, I would really like you all to get back to us with, you know, as much possibility as we can do to put the burden where it belongs, on the people who are creating the need for the extra inspections.
The fear I have of, in terms of just fees, if an inspector doesn't get back to a building, let's say it's a Class A building, in five years. And in the third year, the building would be considered a Class B building, but for five years, we're not charging a rental registration fee, then the building owner that, that otherwise is paying the fee, and yet some other landlord is not paying the fee for having the same kind of condition, I think that would be deemed arbitrary and capricious enforcement of the process, which opens the city up to a possible suit.
Okay, well, yeah, so, so please get together and figure out what's practical. What, what can, what is practical and legally defensible?
I won't speak for community services, but we'll do the legal research.
Okay, I think Carol Ammons was next.
Well, I guess I'll, in light of Mr. Jacobson's questions, I'll just pose, I won't do it at this point. Two questions, though. I thought we had already done annual, this was included in the annual fee schedule increases earlier in the, in my year here, anyway.
We do, we do that every year, but we did not increase this fee. I think since the need to increase the fee really became apparent after that point, and it was just not, the timing was just off. But ordinarily, we would look at that each year as part of the fees.
So, and then the second part is, I think at this point, I couldn't support it at all. My constituents does not want this additional fee passed on to them, so I would not be supporting it tonight. But I would recommend that there be some work on it before it goes anywhere from the council at this point because of what Mr. Jacobson raises.
Okay. Dennis?
Yeah, I think that, that we have again entered the confusion between the use of a fee, a fee, which is a service collected, a collection for service for work done, and a fine, which is where you address issues that aren't in compliance. And so Eric, I think that you're trying to make both things fines. I think that you're, I think the fee thing should be fair and straight and even, just like the stormwater retention fee, you know, fee. You know, that, and there is the greatest similarity or, that should be completely across the board same for those who are using the services and paying the fee for that service to be done in the city, and not create levels of fee paying. I think then that the common sense thing would be to create the fine structure to address exactly the thing that you're concerned about.
I do have one member of the public who wanted to comment on this, and he didn't have a form. So we have a green form instead of a white form. Well, we can get past that. Neil Malone, would you please state your name and address? You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of committee. My name is Neil Malone. I am with the Illinois Association of Realtors, I'm a local governmental affairs director, working with seven of our local associations. And I do apologize for the green form. It wasn't a statement of my Irish heritage. It was simply a, the cake had taken up too much space back there, like it didn't seem to be forms available. Again, I wanted to make a couple of comments on this rather sudden proposal. One, I'm a little concerned that there really has been a lot of transparency, that this is, seems to be, are you discussing this on final passage? This normally would go through the committee process and have a chance to discuss this. So I will, again, try to make my comments within the five-minute process, but to send this from thought to.
I will, I will say that we have discussed this at previous meetings.
This issue, but not this particular ordinance, is my point.
Pretty close to it, yeah.
But typically, that would go to the committee process.
Well, it's up to the council what they want to act on.
I understand. One, I absolutely agree with Councilman Jacobson and Councilman Ammons and Councilman Roberts that this does do exactly this. It punishes good landlords. It is a, is an increase in the cost of doing business as a landlord in Urbana that will ultimately be passed on to folks who rent in Urbana. That is crystal clear. It is not an effort to go after people who violate code issues, like the, like the earlier, the earlier piece, and then now the later piece on increasing fines and penalties. Those do target the bad landlords. Those do go after those who are not playing by the rules. This goes after those who do play by the rules and are making every effort to, to stay in compliance with, with building codes. To simply increase the cost to participate as a landlord, it punishes everybody, good landlords and bad landlords alike. My third point was that when we did discuss the larger fee increases in committee, there was comment made that there are already time and staffing resources that are being bled off out of this program to do other things. My, my point is that if this is a fee, it should be there to pay for the program itself. To then take this fee-funded program and use those resources in other areas does not seem fair to those paying the fee. Finally, I would add that it, when you increase fees, you, and increase a barrier to entry in any occupation, you lessen the number of people who are able and willing to do, to participate in creating jobs or creating a service in your community. The more you drive the small, the small locally-based investors who are doing landlord work, the local folks who are, are participating as a landlord, the more you take the small guys out of the marketplace, you get a lot of times these larger, out-of-state, out-of-area concerns that then serve as a property management firms. And not to be critical of all of them with a broad brush because some are very good, you do lose that local contact with folks in the community who are participating as landlords. So in light of all of those issues, I would just ask you to at least not move this to a final passage vote at all. And I would ask all of the members to vote no on this proposal. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Bill Brown?
I thought of what I forgot. On the Class A properties, I think because it is, we're on about a five, six-year, maybe seven or eight-year cycle, and so many properties have had Class As recently, I think it would make sense to at least go back two or three years. And anybody who's had a Class A for the last two or three years would get an exemption on the first year's assessment, so that, because they probably won't be inspected for another four or five years. And it is just a one-year waiver, it's not a continuous waiver. So I guess we could probably do that administratively if we gave direction, but we'd just throw out maybe January 1st of 2011. Anybody got an A after that would not have to pay this year's, would get a waiver on this year's. The other thing I thought of was, and that comment made me think of that, was that before this, we did have an inspection program and, and a response program that the current inspectors are doing, they're going out and responding to complaints. So there was some funding, probably from the general fund covering that. So I guess that's another reason why I favor the reduced fee, because it's not covering a full salary. And hopefully between this, whatever the total amount's going to be now, it may not cover all three people, but it might cover two and a half, and then we'll find the money for the other half person to do what we were doing before the program started. So that seems like a way to justify covering what we were doing before and only using the program money for, for the new work on the rental expenses. And I guess the only other thing is maybe on the Class A properties, it seems kind of unfair for large apartment complexes with 10 or 12 buildings to have to have a perfect score on all 10 or 12 buildings in order to get an A. So I would prefer if we could arrange it so that you could look at them each building individually, so, you know, that still may be 10 units or 10 to 15 units, but that would put it more on an equal basis to someone who owns a single building with 12 units. And then discount the fee by building if that could be done administratively.
Eric?
I'd like to offer an amendment in its addition. The rate schedule for this ordinance shall expire in one year. Prior to expiration, city staff shall report to the council on the feasibility of establishing a rate schedule such that property owners who have finable failure to remedy violations will pay the full rate, while property owners who do not have such violations shall receive a discount that causes their fees to revert to the previous level. So I'm offering this because I understand that there's an urgency. As I understand it, we're up against a deadline to implement this in the next calendar year. And I feel, I feel truly as though I'm between a rock and a hard place because I think it's very, very important to step up the inspection schedule because frankly, we have people living in third-world conditions. And, and on the other hand, and it's not fair to them not to bolster our inspection. On the other hand, it's not fair to our good property owners to, to penalize them for things that are not their fault. So I'm caught between two bad choices. I think I'm caught between two bad choices because we have not done enough creative thinking and detailed thinking on how to create a fair solution to this. So my, so my amendment is designed to put this in place for a year, but to, but to mandate that it be revisited before, before we have to do this again.
I think we already do it every year, but is there a second to the amendment? Okay, I got it. Did you second it? Okay, guess there's not a second. Is there any more discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded by Mike Manigan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, Renee.
Okay. Maybe you'll have to raise your hands. Charlie, did you vote on the amendment? Charlie?
I voted in favor of it.
Okay. I guess it passed then? Is that correct? Would you raise your hand so I could be sure? One, two, three, four, five. It passed. Okay. Now we have the motion as amended on the floor.
I have one small comment.
Okay.
And I, I agree, I understand where Eric's going, but I also want, like to see some numbers down the road, and I think that's why I supported the amendment. It'll be forces to look at this. We are in effect providing a 20% discount for anybody who gets an A classification, assuming it's a five-year cycle. That's fairly substantial. It, in some cases covers, you know, if you get an A, you cover the increase if you're on the smaller end of the properties. Bill's idea of, of thinking in terms of, of units or something like that to make it a more level playing field is, is one we can flesh out over the next year. Another possibility is to use, you know, like I said, it's a 20% discount. Well, maybe people who get a B get a 10% discount. And, and once we have numbers and see how the program works, we should be able to fine-tune this. But in general, I support the ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who's first here? Diane?
I'm going to support this ordinance, but if we're adding to our list of what we'd like to see, I would like to see the, a summary of what these, this program actually costs. Because if you go to the supplementary expenditure report in the budget, the rental registration program is presented, but not all the expenses are listed there. And it's apparently, it's, it's split among at least two different pages. But this is a very important program, and we're spending a whole lot of time and money doing inspections of rental property, as we should, because two-thirds of the households in Urbana are rental, and they impact every single neighborhood, both positively and negatively in this town. But we, the council and the public, and especially the people paying this fee, deserve to see how much revenue is being collected and what it's being spent on, and have it presented in a report that, that actually makes sense. And I would say the same would go to the revenues and expenditures related to building safety inspections done by the fire department. That's another place where we do, another department that does inspections, and it's very important to housing, related to housing. And we need to know what we're spending there. And that would include any, any personnel costs, any overtime pay, materials, equipment, everything else that goes into those expenses as well. So that is something that would show up in the budget. I'm not making an amendment, I'm just saying, next time the budget is prepared, I'd like to see it much more clearly presented so that we all know what we're.
Yeah, we talked about that, and I think maybe as part of our goal setting, we could just put together a list of the kinds of information we would like from the budget because I think a lot of it is not very clear right now. So we are working on a different format. Our temporary controller is working on that. And I think we have a computer system that we could be using a lot better than we have. So those are good questions, but there are other questions, too. I mean, I've struggled with just trying to get information, so I want it to be much more clear. Yes, Mike, or who's first here? Dennis?
Mike. Okay, I'm just, at this point, I, I think that the, the reduction that Bill Brown suggested and which staff is, has incorporated into this newer version is, makes it fairer. It may not be perfect, but it certainly seems fair to the people who have larger properties. But I, I think that really, if we look at this, the reason why we're interested in, in getting a little bit more income from the rental registration program is to support the, the truth that we actually need more physical time doing the, doing the inspections, and we can't do it with just two people. And so the suggestion is that really this is going to take a three, three-person team to effectively improve the inspections. And, you know, and that any project that you have should be paying for itself. And so where do we get the successful money? And we're only really trying to achieve. And we're only really trying to achieve, um, about half of what the likely, um, salary and benefit package might be for an individual who is going to be hired to, to add to the quality of the program. So, you know, if you want more work done and you want to hire a person to do it, you're probably not going to be able to get by with, you know, offering them $8 an hour. So I think that to, to be self-supporting and not to be taking the, uh, money from other, from other, uh, programs to accomplish this, this is at least, uh, stuff in the right direction. So I think if you want the result, you're going to have to pay for it as you go along.
Uh, Mike?
Well, the reason I, uh, seconded Eric's motion is, uh, first of all, I think it's a, it's a very good idea to study this issue and to spend the next year and to come back, you know, with the report, uh, with the kind of information that he's requesting. Secondly, I supported it because I don't support this ordinance. Therefore, putting a one-year sunset on it, uh, is favorable to my position. So I was selfishly had, had two reasons to second that motion. I continue to oppose, um, the fee increases delineated in A through D of the ordinance. I do not oppose, uh, uh, the remainder from E on down. Uh, so I consider those basically fines. Uh, if, if a businessperson chooses to register late, they should have to be subject to an additional fee. Those things are all known upfront. Those are choices made by a businessperson not to register. Reinspection fees are, to me, tantamount to a fine. It's because of something that was not taken care of that there has to be reinspection. So I'm fine with those kind of things. But the other thing I want to bring up here is I, just kind of a process issue. Here we are, here we are in the full council, uh, debating an ordinance that is similar to, it's an iteration of a previous ordinance that was held in committee. Okay? And, yeah, in fact, I believe failed in committee. So I just don't think from a process perspective, we ought to be here tonight. Uh, and I'm not quite sure how this happens. Uh, you know, maybe some of the more senior members of the council can school me on this, but how is it that an ordinance that is very familiar with a defeated ordinance in committee, how does that come up before the council for a final vote? I'd, I'd, I'd be glad to...
The council can decide what they want to vote on. It has to be on the agenda. And I did contact people with the idea that if it had failed, somebody had to be on the, the prevailing side. That doesn't turn out to be the case. I'm apparently able to put something on the agenda, but I did consult council members first. So I had people who wanted to revisit it, and we seemed to have enough votes to support it. So that's why it's here, because we want to get it done before we send the notices out to the people. Otherwise, we have to wait for another whole year. And we don't, we have so much demand for inspections. We got the second inspector, inspector by having this ordinance passed to begin with a few years ago. Because where, where were we going to get the money from? And people are very interested in getting good building inspections. They're interested in fines. You can't collect fines. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about fines. You can't collect them unless you have an inspection, so that's what it boils down to.
I completely understand the, uh, the motivation of the folks supporting this. And, uh, believe me, I, I live in this city, too, and, and I appreciate the need for inspections. I will say, though, um, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm concerned that the reason we are here today is because, uh, the inspectors we have currently, uh, are unable to shoulder the load partially because they have six weeks of benefit time, uh, for the year. I'm not saying that that's more than any other city employee, but that is just way more than any public or private sector, uh, employee enjoys. Uh, that's 42 paid days a year, uh, according to the earlier, uh, analysis that was given us in committee. 218 days of work time are available for inspections. So maybe as part of the whole study of this, we ought to look at outsourcing the inspection process to the private sector, where it could maybe be much more efficiently done and no pension liability would be incurred. And we wouldn't have to worry about vacation days and sick days and all those kinds of things. And we would maybe get 250 days a year of inspections per inspector, as opposed to 218. With that, uh, I'm going to exercise my right as a council member to def, to move to defer, uh, this ordinance to the next meeting. And I would appreciate a second.
Second.
I guess we can't debate, um, deferral, right? Okay, so we'll defer it. Uh, Diane, did you have a question?
To the next committee meeting or council meeting?
The next council meeting? Does it, it doesn't really...
It automatically goes to the next council meeting.
Right.
Okay, next council meeting, okay. All right. Next, we have ordinance number 2013-10-094, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 1, Section 1 through 10K regarding fines for building, fire, and flood safety code violations. And here we have John Schneider to explain what this is.
And this is, uh, basically a bit of housekeeping, so that we can actually, uh, raise the fines that we talked about earlier. And the other thing that it does, it, it increases the, um, let's see. Can't be more than $750. Any fines should not be less than $1 and not more than $750. Also, in the first, uh, sentence of the, um, there's a change. Uh, we were removing the words, or the letters C A B O, which stood for, uh, the name of a older code that we no longer use. That was from the, uh, 1990 code series. We're now on the ICC code series. We felt it would just be better to make it more generic.
Any questions for John?
Move approval?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mike Madigan?
With regard to the, um, uh, health, life, safety, and the livability, the range for compliance is one to three or one to five. Let's just take, uh, for example, uh, an inspector, um, finds a livability issue and gives, gives the landlord one day to comply. But the landlord calls five contractors and can get no one there to do the work. And this is a mandatory fine. I just, I have diff, I'm, I'm okay with the fine process. I think that's how this problem ought to be addressed, because it's getting at the root of the problem. But I have difficulty with some of the scenarios that are posed by a one-day compliance deadline, when, as a business owner, I know how hard it is to get people to my business in one day, even for an emergency situation. Sometimes it's just not possible. So that, that would be my one concern that I would throw out. I'm generally supportive of this, but I am a bit concerned about that scenario.
Well, our inspectors are very reasonable people, and I think that they take that into consideration. It, it depends on the situation, too. If someone is out of hot wa, I mean, you know, there's, there's a list of things in our code, um, that are considered imminent. But things like if they don't have electricity, if they don't have heat, those are imminent. We want those fixed right away. And you can get, I mean, you, if, if you're diligent enough, I think that our experience is, is you can get people, or you can get the problem resolved. In some cases, we allow, in a certain situation, if somebody doesn't have heat, we allow for a space heater. That could be a temporary resolution where they could avoid the fine and the ticket.
Well, in your hot water scenario, uh, in, in order to avoid a $750 fine, could a, could a landlord offer to pay for a hotel room?
Absolutely.
For a couple of days, and that would avert the fine?
Absolutely. That, we, you know, we want to, we want to get the, the problem solved.
Sure.
You know, we're not in the business of finding people. We're more in the business of getting, uh, properties up to code, and that, that certainly would qualify.
Right. I'm just throwing out the scenario where a landlord is diligent and can say, "I've called, you know, a half a dozen plumbers, and I can get no one here on a Saturday." So, you know, it's, it's Friday at 4:30 when the inspection happens, and I can get no one here. It's the weekend. So I'm just concerned about someone getting fined $1,500 or, uh, you know, or, or north of $2,000 just because it's a weekend and a water heater can't be replaced until Monday, kind of thing.
We've, I think we've had that happen, um, at least. I've been building safety manager for about two years, and I can vaguely recall a situation where we, you know, somebody didn't have hot water, and we allowed them to, you know, the, the landlord moved them into a, you know, a unit. And typically with most responsible landlords, it's not going to be a problem. We can come to a resolution in that regard.
Are you ready? I think there was a, a motion and a second, correct? Okay, any other discussion on this? Did you want to say something, Bill? Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. And Carol Ammons wants to say something.
I just want to make a quick correction. Um, the request earlier was for us to have a separate study session, a special study session to review the I dot traffic data. I think it's important to actually have that separate, because otherwise we'll be here until midnight on a regular committee of the hall or council meeting if we don't have a special designated meeting for that particular, uh, topic. And so I'm requesting the mayor to look through with staff for a calendar time between the dates requested, October 29th and November 15th, to come up with a special study session for us.
I'll second that, if you need it.
You can just ask me. You're welcome. Okay, um, we'll be happy to do that. We work with calendars, and we'll try to see what we can do. But I agree, it should be a separate session, because there seems to be a lot of confusion about this. Diane?
And just to confirm, we're going to have the Adams Outdoor Advertising on the October 28th Committee of the Hall.
October 28th?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, what's this October 20th? I thought, I thought the way it was set up, first you wanted the traffic one first, and then the Adams. Oh, you said November 11th, okay.
Initially, I said November 11th, but that's a, a regular meeting for us, and we don't want to do it on a regular...
Well, I don't know if we can do two, two big deals in that short a time. What about November 11th? Oh, well, you already said November 15th. We'll, we'll work it out. We'll work it out.
We just want a special study session.
It just depends on how many other things need to be acted on, but I will talk to the, um, department heads tomorrow morning, so we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.